All the meeting's order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, the agenda adjustment is tonight we'll be voting on an auto-state field trip to New Hampshire for the cosmetology students. Also, this meeting is being videotaped. Public comment. Are there any more from the public that would like to speak?
Yeah, I think the majority of us want to.
Okay, you each have five minutes.
Oh, wow.
And you don't have to use it.
That's fine.
And for a 30-minute maximum, let's do it. Four people.
Okay. All right. Do you want me to stand here or there?
Go to the podium.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to make sure every email's correct because I did try emailing and I didn't get any responses. It's the first two initial, I'm sorry, it's the first initial of your first name and then your last name and then at salchovotech.org. Is that correct? You can't talk. You can't respond to me, correct?
No, S. I think we can, Mr. Chairman. S, 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 so it would be the same suffix as with all other staff in sending emails.
Some of us on the school committee don't go on that website very often.
Okay.
So, just so you know, if you were trying to reach your town's rep, that may be the issue.
Okay. My husband and I did write you an email on October 5th. I'll just read it to you. "Good afternoon. Thank you for taking your time and your service at Salchow Tech. I'm writing on behalf of like-minded parents who have children at Salchow Tech. Mr. Hickey had sent out a parent survey regarding masks before the start of school. He got 50% response from that survey. That means 50% of the parents replied. Out of that 50% response, he got 65% of parents who were for personal choice. I understand you not subject our children to this illegal mandate, but you can be a voice for us and our children. I am asking that you, as a board, take a stand on this issue and vote. There are other school committees who have recently sent D E S I letters objecting to the mask mandate. Other school boards who objected were Sandwich, Abington, Hanover, and Silver Lake. We all know the next legal mandate by D E S I and the Education Commissioner will be the vaccine. Thank you for your time on this matter." I also, sorry, I also have three questions that I wanted to ask also. All right. Are you willing to denounce the letter that the National School Board Association sent to President Biden requesting that he direct federal law enforcement to investigate parents? If you are, have you contacted the National School Board Association to let them know? Have you contacted the U.S. Department of Justice to tell them as well? Have you seen anything from your constituents that could be described as equivalent to a form of domestic terrorism? If you have, can you please be specific about what happened and whether or not local state law enforcement were or were not equipped to handle it? Can you please tell us how the board and the school district define these words? Intimidation, harassment, and threat? Thank you.
Excuse me, when I almost interrupted.
Sorry.
We need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Julie Higgins, 81 Maryland Street, Harshill, Mass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You could just take your name and you could.
Yes, Alicia Guevara. Do you want my address?
Go ahead.
32 Morningside Drive, Rockland, Mass. First of all, as I expressed, Mr. Hickey initially when we were protesting in front of the school over the mask mandate, I do appreciate that this is a guideline that has come down from D E S I and that the school was attempting to adhere to what the community was asking for. I think from what Julie just said, it was a pretty clear result that the community is asking not to be mandating A. masks and I can certainly assure that if the vaccine mandate comes down, it will be that as well. I would like to share a statistic with you that you may or may not be aware of as to one of the reasons why, as parents, we are so emotional about this situation. As you may or may not know, the death rate for COVID in the ages 19 and below is .0004 zeros, I believe it is, 04, okay? Yet, in the last year and a half, the suicide attempt rate in that same age grade is 1.5%. That is an astronomical statistical difference. And that doesn't even begin to touch the mental health that is not included, that has not escalated to the level of suicide. It does not discuss or get into those with learning disabilities who need facial expressions to help them understand social cues. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. I'm sure you all appreciate what the situation is and that's why we are very emotional about this, one of the reasons why we're very emotional about this. We also have our own concerns that more things are coming that we don't want. So, having said that and knowing that really the issue that we need to fight with is D E S I, I did come across a news article that I would like to get your interpretation of and your position on. So, it's my understanding that the D E S I is going to be meeting after, I think it's next week, about what's going to happen next. And they've made a statement about schools that are at an 80% vaccination rate or higher can make their own personal choice about the mandate or not. However, I did see here that it says whether or not a district or school avails itself with the 80% vaccination off-ramp is a local decision to be made by schools and district leaders in consultation with health officials. And that's from Riley. In case, I'm skipping through here. Case in point was in Hopkinton. It goes into some detail I don't think you really need to hear. But it says, "We want to hear a lot more from parents who do not want masks on their children, but we are going with what the best medical advice is." And then another study that just came out that you may or not be aware of is that in Wisconsin, they did a study against vaccinated versus unvaccinated to see their viral load when they were, came down with COVID. Because we all know vaccinated people are coming down with COVID as well, correct? Including dying from COVID as well. In fact, in the UK, more people with the vaccine are dying from COVID now than unvaccinated. The study actually concluded that in people that are symptomatic, the viral load is the same, meaning their risk of spreading and the level that they are experiencing the COVID is the same in unvaccinated and unvaccinated. So, basically, they have an equal opportunity of sharing COVID to someone else and spreading it. However, in asymptomatic people, people that are not showing symptoms but are positive, there is a far greater viral load in the people that are vaccinated than the people that are unvaccinated. Meaning vaccinated people are spreading that because A. they're asymptomatic, so they're not sitting at home and getting rest and because they feel fine and they're vaccinated, right? But they're spreading that at a much higher rate than unvaccinated people. So, if vaccinated people are wearing masks and vaccinated and still spreading COVID, what is the point of the mask? The masks themselves say that they do not prevent disease. They won't protect you from it. On the box, right there, the mask that 95% of you are wearing says it will not protect you. But yet, we're insisting that our children can't breathe, are coming home with rashes on their face, and not to mention all the other mental health issues that I just discussed and learning disability issues. This is child abuse. In a sense, we're literally pushing these kids to suicide because of their social issues over this and what we've done to them in the last year and a half. So, my question to you really is, what is your interpretation about your ability to push back on D E S I once this is over? And B., if you do have that ability, will you? And C., if you don't follow what D E S I says, which is a mandate given by the Board of Education, and this is not an educational issue, this is a health issue, what are the consequences? I know that's a lot to ask you, but that's what I would really like to get out of this. Like, what are our options here, other than fighting at the state level, which we are? Where is our power as parents at this school and is your power that we've given you in this committee? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Twist, 51 Glen Street, Whitman. I'm not a public speaker. I'm terrible at this. I want to know, who do I go to if I have a complaint about the behavior of the school staff? Who would I talk to? Because I've tried talking to people and they investigate within themselves, but I want to know what outside agency can I get an independent investigation done to behavior of the school staff towards the kid's discipline and towards searching the kids for drugs or whatever? Who would I talk to about that? Would that be the handle of the police, state police?
You want to?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I recognize the public comment is generally a one-way conversation, but I think there are points when it's more expeditious to try to address a question.
I'm just asking a question. I'm not here to raise a scene or anything. I just want to know. I'm getting a lot of dead ends with the administrators.
When there are issues involving, if it's involving staff, that would be not me. Then the matter would ultimately be addressed to me. And then depending on the nature, but the outside agencies could include, if it's a civil rights issue, it could be through the Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights. Or if it's a criminal, potential criminal issue, it could be through the police.
All right. Now, my other concern with the mask is your discipline, how you guys are disciplining the kids. If the kid's mask comes down under his nose, he doesn't have a mask on, you guys are treating it like it's a detention, like it's a behavioral issue. A kid should not be given a detention because he's not earned a mask properly. These kids are kids. And take good kids who have no discipline record and to punish them, if there's a state mandate that you have to wear the mask, but there's no mandate on how you discipline the kids for it. And the way that the administration's handling it, I find it conspicuous. I think it's terrible. And also today, not to go off the beaten path, my daughter was searched yesterday. We were not happy about the way it went down. And I was told it's basically the administrator's word against my daughter's word. I got my daughter in tears. My daughter was in Pembroke Hospital last year where she was hurting herself and hurting herself. She's all kinds of issues and now she's coming to school and she doesn't feel safe here. And you can hear I'm getting emotional. I'm getting fed up with this. She should be here to learn and that's it, not treated like a prisoner. And I'm sick of it, sick of it. And something has to be done about it. And I'm done. I get no responses from the principal here. He does a terrible job. Most honest any person has ever talked to him. They're like, "I'm sorry, I'm being rude, but that's how I feel." And you guys really have to do a better job keeping an eye on the administrators here. And if someone has to talk to the parents, don't get angry. Guy up here shaking. I'm so mad right now. I'm not a public speaker. I don't like doing this. I feel, this isn't me. I've never gone to a school for any meeting in my life. 42 years old, I've never gone to a school for any meeting. But here I am because I feel like my kids are getting bullied by the administrators.
Mr. Chairman, as we've talked about before, there is a chain of command on these issues. And those matters would, of course, not be, you have the right to express your concern, but certainly there's a chain of command and also if it involves a staff issue in the building, that matter would reside with me.
Well, this meeting, I've missed a piece on great job. He's been a gentleman the whole time. I can't say enough good things about this, Hickey. You and I have talked a few times over the last couple of weeks. But you guys really shouldn't, go back to what Julie said. Nobody, I sent an email to Salvucci because I'm in Whitman. No reply. I think he's on vacation in Murrell Beach. I sent an email to the head of, is that you, sir?
Yes.
No reply. So, you guys, you are here. I don't want to sound like you're working for us, but you are working, you represent us and we can't get a hold of you. You need to do a better job talking to your people. That's it. So, thank you for your time, folks, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay. Student advisory. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Grace. I'm listening here. Before I get started on some other stuff, I really have to talk about what you guys mentioned about masks from my point of view as a student. I'm sorry. For me, as a student, I need those masks and I know, I know not everyone feels that way. I have a grandma who is very high risk and I want to be able to see her. But when there are other students who don't help protect other people, that is what this is about. And I mean this with all respect to your parents because I truly understand and I don't mean to get so upset about this.
Okay, Grace.
Are we allowed to change the order?
Sure. Approve the minutes. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the September school committee meeting. Situated, second right, co-hesitant. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Sing none. All those in favor? Any one opposed? No, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Reports, the treasurer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cover the report this week. We have, this month, we have the football team, the ball team, and again, some pictures from the Kenny Thayer car show, which happened here on the property last month. Page one has our cash balances. Again, we're in the cycle of, we did our first round of billing for our member towns. That money was received and now we would go away. We're still strong. We've got a total of over $8 million in our reserve in our account, savings accounts. Again, in my effort to spread our savings accounts amongst the local banks, we did last, I think, last month, opened up an account in Mountain One Bank located in Rockland. Again, interest rates all over the place are pretty low these days and that's affecting the basis of our account right now. We also hope we have reserve accounts totaling $836,000. Again, we continue to add that fund every year through our budget process. Page two is our revenue. Again, pretty, we had no revenue from our local towns again because we did the billing already. And we'll be doing our second round of billing on November 1st. The Chapter 70 money from the state that came in like buck, so that's $371,000 that comes in through the state every month with a little bit of investment. Overall, about $372,000 was the revenue for this month. The final page, the expenditures, is pretty much $921,000 was spending under our budget. Again, the largest number, of course, is always the payroll, probably our staff. Everything else is running smoothly. Line 28 has a large number for shop supplies as the teachers got situated. Again, there's a large ordering process to get everybody up and running for the coming year. Again, the first couple of months. That number's a little high, but everything else is going along smoothly. So, that's the financial report for the month of September.
Could I have a motion?
Take a motion. That's red.
Second right, situated. Any discussion on the treasurer's report? Sing none. All those in favor? Aye. No one opposed? Motion carries. Subcommittee assignment. Is that all?
One more thing. One more thing is that as many of you probably know, Tricia Murphy left, resigned and moved on to a job that provides her with limited upward mobility. We were lucky to find Pam Curtis. Pam's a resident of Hanover with extensive experience in the accounting and payroll industry. Therefore, Pam joined us shortly in September and has been doing a fantastic job learning the ropes, meeting the people, working your way through our payroll system and so forth. In fact, Tricia's back tonight with Pam going over some of the little minor things that don't happen every once in a while. So, Tricia has been helping us out after she left. But Pam's doing a great job with the payroll system. Everybody, everybody's getting paid every two weeks, which is what's happening, which is a perfect thing. And Janine, again, in the office is doing a great job as well with all the supplies and reports and again, to personnel, things running smoothly in the business office.
Thank you. That is him?
That's it.
I don't want to cut you short again.
Not a problem.
Okay, subcommittees. In your packet, document three is everyone's assignment to the subcommittees. I did receive one call for someone that was interested about one committee and I did put him on that. Other than that, I signed it as evenly as I could. Superintendent Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brief report. I'll start with construction projects update. First off, as you all know, we're slated to replace all of the exterior windows in the 1992 addition. We all are well aware of supply chain issues and we unfortunately are not immune to that. So, after consultation with our project manager, we're going, given how late it is in the season and no immediate guarantee of the arrival of the ordered hardware, the project will move to the spring at no additional cost to us. And the contractor will continue to work on the premise that they'll do the work in the second shift or it won't involve the displacement of students, but they can't install what they don't have, essentially is what we're dealing with. The other project update that I'd like to mention is that, as you know, we have, we're beginning the process again of working with DRA, the engineering firm, and our project manager, P. Three, regarding two projects that if they stay on our desired schedule, would lead to some construction being done next summer. The first being the replacement of the roof on the 1992 addition. And also, and perhaps a little more exciting in terms of its creativity, funds that we'll be using, a portion of the funds that we would be using from the recent debt authorization approval to add some square footage. So, the capital project subcommittee will hopefully be meeting with a representative from DRA by the end of October, but certainly before our November meeting to hear a report from them on some potential ideas as to where we might be able to put on some targeted space and what some of the purposes are. We've talked for years about a lot of what-ifs and we have operated under the premise that we've got to move some things around in order to make certain footprints better. So, some of the potential moves don't just involve the addition of new space, but also the renovation and reorganization of some existing space. So, if you bear with me, for instance, we're looking at reorganizing the location of some of our vocational programs where, instead of having two separate automotive footprints, we would combine them into one. We would move our HVAC program into a slightly larger space on the other side of the courtyard. We would locate our horticulture program at the end of a hallway where it has a garage door that would allow for heavy equipment. We would expand the space of our electrical program, which consistently we are unable to satisfy the annual needs of the students who want. So, we'll need to invest funds in the renovation and the engineers will need to do their work in assessing in greater detail what the cost would be. So, along with the potential for adding some new space, we also have the potential for reorganizing what we have. Now, for that to happen, as you can probably imagine, we're talking about something that would have to take place, at least for the new construction, that would also be in the summer of 2022. And it's likely that would be the first step in this. We have outside contractors come in and do the outside shell. And then during the 2223 school year, we would have our students, to the greatest extent possible, do the work on the inside. One possible model that the engineers will bring for consideration would be the addition of about 9,000 or 10,000 square feet immediately here in the front of the school. That's one rendering that they're going to bring to the subcommittee. The principal architect on that had shared that idea. But that's not the only one and that's the whole purpose of having a group of this committee take a closer look and ask some good questions. And of course, look at cost estimates. We don't need to guess that cost estimates are increasing, certainly. But we want to know what it is that we're able to do for the funds that we have available. So, the intent here is, with some design work done in the fall, by the time we get to December of this calendar year, as we are putting together a budget recommendation for you, we will be able to estimate in the debt service part of the budget, of each town's assessment, what one year's debt service might be. And as you remember, our projected plan was, we have multiple capital projects we want to do. We want to start with some short-term borrowing for the first two years and then convert it to principal. We'll have more accurate figures for the full committee as we get closer to December, but the work begins now. It begins with the subcommittee and the design team, ultimately bringing a full presentation back to the full committee through the budget process where you would see the preferred design in the budget process. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll also add, I want to offer my thanks to two members of our legislative delegation, Representative Dave Decost and Representative Josh Cutler, both of whom took it upon themselves, or they took the initiative to schedule a meeting with representatives from the MSVA. And I had an opportunity to debrief with them after the meeting. I'm grateful that they used their platform as elected officials to communicate directly to the MSVA and say, "Salchow Tech, a seventh-time applicant for the MSVA's core program, a well-maintained aging small school must be given consideration for all the reasons that we already know." So, we regularly get legislative support. These two gentlemen took it to the next level in directly engaging with MSVA and they have, they're also intending to take the next step of coordinating a letter that would be ultimately, hopefully, signed by all members of our legislative delegation, the state reps and senators that represent all eight of our towns. The timeline for MSVA, it got thrown off with COVID. We just, we learned late for 2020 and now they're back on track. So, the timeline for finding out about the application we submitted back in April of 2021 or May of 2021 is this November. Potentially, a subcommittee of the MSVA would make recommendations to the full board and they would take it up either at their December 2021 meeting or perhaps the following quarter in February. And as I've been saying, at the risk of a broken record, we, our messaging is, we already have the funds available to engage feasibility. You know how if in your communities you've had building projects, the first step is always, does the town support the initiative? Will they put up the money to do feasibility? We've already got the money available. Just give us the invitation and we'll jump into the HOV lane for the MSVA and be able to move this forward. So, hopefully, seven times the charm, maybe at our December or January meeting, I'll have a report back to you. But thank you to those representatives who made that effort. And I think with regard to construction projects, that's all I have on that, Mr. Chairman. In terms of a COVID update, we are reporting up to families weekly about the status of active cases. We'll have another report that will go out on Friday. As of today, we don't have any, we currently don't have any active cases, which is great. That's, you know, that's having our school nurse catch her breath is great. We're all happy about that. Statistically, as we all watch the news and when we talk about vaccination rates, to provide you an update, if you take our entire school community, which is defined as all the kids, all the staff, coaches, coaches who are on our faculty, coaches who are not, we take the entire number, the total percentage of vaccinated staff and students combined is about 60, 6-0, 0.5%. combined is about sixty, six zero point five percent. And that breaks down, as you can imagine, there are more kids than adults. And when you break out those two sets of numbers, the vaccination rate of our student body is about 55 percent, the vaccination rate of our faculty and staff is approximately 80 percent. Put those together, you come up with a number just slightly north of 60 percent. Commissioner, the commissioner, at least in a recent Globe article, there's an indication that the Department of Education will come out with recommendations as to what will the state be mandating, if anything, after November 1st, and that there would be some indication of that sometime next week. As the current standard is in place, there is, as you may have heard, there's an 80% guideline. My understanding of that guideline is that there could be a community who, even if it reaches an 80% threshold, could decide at the local level not to avail themselves of the mask optional strongly recommended. So it's not an automatic trigger mechanism, but it's a mechanism for consideration. So what I would see happening here is, we will see what DESI does. If DESI removes the mask mandate as it's currently constituted, we currently have a face coverage policy on our books that we approved last summer, which feels like a lifetime rule. That, we would have to see what the guidance is. If they remove the mandate, then it goes back to becoming a local matter, a policymaking decision, which ultimately would come in front of this committee. And it would be at that point that we would take a look at the facts as they are, look at the existing policy that we voted back last summer, and then make a decision what to do at the local level. You might remember prior to the mask mandate, the standard was strongly recommended, which was where the Department of Public Health was. They raised the bar. So I would anticipate that there might be a bit of a gap between the state board, or the board empowered the commissioner to make a decision. So we'll have to see where that plays out. So I think we'll see an answer that's either, we're extending the mandate as is for X number of days, we're withdrawing the mandate and leaving it up to local school boards to decide what to do next. In any event, I would imagine this would be something that we'd be talking about at our November meeting, to see what the next steps are. But I do thank, I do thank all of our staff and students. It's complicated, it's challenging, it's difficult. We don't want to be a school that, you know, no school wants to be one who wants to play fast and loose with rules, certainly, even some real challenging rules like we're dealing with now. And we've come a long way. Folks here have done a lot of good work under challenging circumstances, last year when we were remote and this year when we're back. So we'll be sure to, we'll be sure to have this as a priority topic next month. Mr. Chairman?
Jim, excuse me, sorry. Right back to the agenda with Grace's student advisor. Okay, I thought he was done.
No, that's okay, Mr. Chairman. I'm done with mine. Would you like to go back to Grace, and then we'll do administrator reports?
Sure. I was just going to do that one about how Grace is, if you would. Okay, I'm ready.
All right. I'm back this time, but with better news. Um, so I really wanted to talk about some good stuff that's been going on the past few weeks. Last week, we had homecoming, which was really fun. We were able to have our masks off, be outside. It was a beautiful night, and I know, I don't think there was a single student who didn't have a good time, who, or who like had a problem with anything. Um, we have tournaments coming up, a basketball tournament between staff and students, hopefully, and a kickball tournament, also hopefully. And we also just finished a popcorn fundraiser for student council. We raised over $800, which was good, because we didn't have any money. And also, senior privileges started this week for box lunches from the brass liner. A lot of students are very excited about that, so I'm also excited about it. I'm getting my first one tomorrow, so. I know, that's what I got. And I also just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Aubrey and Ms. Baldner, because they've had a lot of patience between, with the seniors, and there's been a lot of misinformation between them and a lot of stress, and they've been very helpful and, again, patient, so. Thank you. And, yeah, I think that's it.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before I get into my presentation, I just have to say, Mr. Filano is in the audience. He is the student council representative, and Grace, obviously, the student body president. They were instrumental in last Friday's dance, where we had 400 students outside. The shops got together, electrical and horticulture made the space beautiful. And as Grace said, we have not heard one bad thing from a student, so it was a great night. It was great to see the kids out socializing. That's one of the things we're really focusing on this year, is to get them out and do those type of things. All right, I'm going to move into my regular presentation. It's October, so we're talking about MCAS. We usually have the good, and we have the not-so-good, and that's how it is this year. I just want to bring you back. We had 163 ninth breakers take a test. They can take one of two tests, they can take biology or physics, depend on what they're in. And then we had, on the other side, we had 185 sophomores and juniors take a test. So it was 162 sophomores, the whole sophomore class had to take the test, 23 juniors took the test. They were looking for options for the John and Abigail Adams scholarships. So this was all done, and last spring, you remember last year, some of the students on academic days were not here every day, some were remote, some were in, they were in and out. So these scores reflect that. They also reflect the year before, when they were not in school for three months. So overall, the students and the staff did an incredible job. Do we have places we need to work on? Of course we do. We would never say we don't. But overall, if you turn to page two, in my little colorful handout, you have the science results. Mr. Filano also happens to be the science department head. We do applaud them. If you look, it's over, just under, or just around, 80% of the students received a score of advanced or proficient, which is what the state calls for, says that they have the knowledge they need from the court. So over 80% of our students. Another 17 or so percent were in the needs improvement, and we had a small percentage that did not make the grade yet. Talk about what's going to happen with them, it was actually six students makes up that percentage. And the English results, these are the sophomores and the juniors. When I'm talking about it, I'm combining the two together, okay? So we have, once again, 15% exceeding and 60-some-odd percent meeting. So once again, 75% of the students met the state goals or exceeded the state goals on the exam. That's how you would read that. And there's a little different nomenclature or categories when you get to the sophomore test, but they pretty much mean the same thing. So the orange sliver, once again, is the number of students who did not pass. That is two out of that group did not pass, okay? On the third page, we have the math. Math, once again, a smaller percentage, but I think that really goes to having that teacher in front of you. It's easier to read a textbook, it's easier to read a novel and do the writing portion, but when you have to break down a problem and work through a large stage problem, you need that teacher in the room, on the board, or the kids at the board. And that happened in less numbers last year. And I think we're seeing that result here. So we had 16 students who did not make the grade last year, and I will tell you, the vast majority of them were within two or three points. So we're not talking anybody's way off the scale here, they're all very close. So what are we doing with them? How do we help them? So we've started since day one this school year, we've built into our calendar, and into our bells, and into our scheduling system. These students are meeting with teachers extra. So the math teacher meets with those students who have not passed the math test every day during ninth period. The English teacher is working with those students who need the English test during ninth period. When we come along to the science test society, the English and math tests are being offered in November, the state has a different schedule for each. And the science test, the biology test is offered in February. So we'll be starting the biology remediation after Thanksgiving, and we'll do the same thing, we'll have the students come during ninth period and work on it. Now, by chance, these students do not pass in those tests, they can take them again in the spring, and we do our usual MCAS boot camp that we do every year, reading into these, where students stay after school with teachers and work on different areas of the program. Anybody have any questions on MCAS? All right, I'm also equally excited. School council, school council's made up of staff members, students, and parents. It's a three-pronged approach, and they are there to look at the future and look where we're trying to direct the school. So they develop the school improvement plan, which we usually come to you with every May, but we're kind of putting that on the shelf right now. School improvement, the school council's working on some in-school kind of stuff. So the first month, this month, we were talking about something that I know we've brought up here before, is a community service project, our community service hours. So I believe we have a template in place that will require every student to have 10 community service hours per school year, and we obviously grandfather that in next year. Grace is on that committee along with other students from freshman all the way up. So we feel that it's an opportunity between walks, the volleyball team had a great walk out here on Columbus Day, had a lot of students participate, that would be a community service project. Working at the local food shelters would be a community service project. So this is something a lot of other high schools do, that I think we're a little behind on, but we're going to catch up, and we're going to put this in for next year. So I will be bringing that to you probably in January or February, for, just so you're aware, this is what the criteria is going to look like. We're also looking at promotion of activities, that social aspect we were talking about. We're running an activity at club fair at the end of school days. Every student is going through all of our clubs and activities to see what we have to offer. Some of them don't even know we have a robotics club. Some don't know that we have Dungeons and Dragons, which seems a little outdated, but it's one of the biggest clubs we have in the building. So there's opportunities for these kids to get involved. My message to these students since day one is, high school is tough if you're only here 7:30 to 2:30. You have to get involved, you have to experience it. I'm going to end with, I'm hoping they experienced it this week. Tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, our boys soccer team plays for the league championship. On Friday night, the volleyball team has their senior night. They will be playing for a tie in the league championship. The football team plays at 7 o'clock on Friday night. They are playing for a league championship. These are the things we're trying to get the students and the adults to. So I hope any of all of you can join us. Mr. Mahoney, I'm assuming you're going to be there to root us on? Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you. We're going to bring Ms. Baldner up, she's going to talk about money and a whole bunch of other good things. Sure.
And you're saying you want the adults involved too, but I didn't know that any of these championships are going on, our parents that aren't, whose kids aren't on the team, invited, or is there...
No, you're invited.
I mean, is there like a size restriction? I don't know.
No, no, there's, no, you have to be masked, but there is no restriction of how many kids can be inside the gym, and outside, you can...
Okay.
We welcome you, please.
Because my kids won't be there.
Well. They do, they don't, they won't say it, it's like me, they won't be there, but they won't say they won't be there. Okay? Any other questions? I'm sorry. The concession stand will be open both tomorrow night and Friday night at the book boom game. So it's a good way to meet some of the parents association members, too.
And when is the, when is the club fair?
The club fair is going on all week, so they're being pulled out of their last period, their directed study, their homework help center, to go down and visit all the clubs.
So it's not optional for them to go?
No, unfortunately, no, we're mandating that they go. We're not mandating that they sign up for anything.
Right, no, it's great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Well, thank you.
Good evening, committee.
Hi, Shandy.
Parents, thank you for your stamina and your engagement in our school community. Your voice is valued, however frustrating I'm sure it must feel at the moment, your partnership is important to us. I have an update on some grants, I have an update on our classrooms, and I have an update on some wraparound services, and I will keep it brief and pointed. So through the hard work of Keith Boyle and the Allied Health Program, they earned a $256,000 skills capital grant last spring, issued to us last summer, and that, the work is now rolling out. So we're working on improvements in that program, funding for a doctor's office in Allied Health, resources for things like oil immersion microscopes, AEDs, and CPR mannequins, real-life industry standard equipment, and it will support the development of a night school program in the Allied Health industry. Through the work of Cara Chromack, Jerry Shaw, Kristin McAvoy, and Pam Walsh, we earned another $100,000, just under, through a math life sciences grant. We'll be building a biotech lab inside a classroom space, where they'll be using some of those oil immersion microscopes. A biotech course is under development, which will be dual enrollment with Quincy College. We are building a stats course, which will have units of study infused with the biotech industry. We are working on virtual biotech and biomedical lab tours, and our teachers will be trained at J&amp;J Dupuy over the next school year. The exciting part of the math life sciences grant, for me personally, is not just the content, but in fact, the duration of the grant itself. It was funded in June, and the equipment has to be purchased through the fiscal year, but the professional development goes until December of 2022. So we have a year and a half to implement professional development, which is a really good thing. It's the right timeline for teachers, faculties, and schools. Our classrooms, I've had the opportunity to get out into lots and lots of classrooms. I was hobbling around on the boot for the first eight weeks of the school year, so I am finally on two feet. Although, I'm not going to lie, I really enjoyed scooting around with two of our other students around the campus, I think I'm going to keep it. But the classrooms, we really had a good time. The classrooms look great. What we were able to accomplish last year through the hybrid learning, the amount of growth in instructional capacity using technology for our teachers was immense. We didn't want to come back to school and see that we just had hybrid classrooms happening in the school, and that is not what is happening. The best of the technology instruction is there to support our students when they're in school and at home, but what I'm seeing as classrooms is appropriate partner work. Teachers telling kids to close the computer as they can work on a dialogue-based activity. So really good stuff, a nice blend happening in the classrooms, really great work on the part of the teachers. And finally, kids are still struggling, it has been a long haul, and so we have a lot of wraparound services that we're, I'd love the parents to hear about, to support our students. So we have postings for educators to support students in the evening through content, the academic content area, so online evening tutoring. I know that my students, my own children struggle with, one with math, one with ELA. I'd love to get them online with a teacher for 45 minutes once a week to talk about their work, so that's what we're looking at. So an opportunity to get online at night to go over homework in real time. We are working on study skills support for students who need it, organizational management in the evening online, so not the content, but just getting yourself together. Some students need that support in the evening. We have Saturday school, which actually is fun. We've been having a good time at Saturday school. Once the kids get there, there are content area instructors there to help the kids get over the hump, and we actually do have a good time once we're there. We are working on before-school academic support, so paying instructional aid to be early on campus, because kids arrive early on campus, and to help those students who need it. We did that last year during the hybrid days, and it was very successful, so we'll continue that. And I will end with on-the-job training for our counselors. It has been a trying time for all humans, and students are humans, and so our counselors are getting some on-the-job training to support the varying and different needs that our students are encountering with our Dr. Charlie Munt Hank to support them. So he's making time to spend time with them on campus and give them some guidance on how to support our kids. All really good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Shandy. Go ahead, Mike.
All right. A week from Thursday, October 28th, we have our advisory meeting. I know a number of you do show up for that. So we're having two sessions. The first session starts at 6:00, the second at 7:00. You're more than welcome to come. We're doing a, we're doing a hybrid model. So some of the folks are going to be in-house, and some of the folks have chosen to be at home, and we'll be showing them on large screen TVs like this or bigger, so that they can participate in both models. So I just welcome you, please come. And then on November 6th, we are having our open house, that is by registration only, for eighth-grade parents, AKA families from our ascending towns. Thank you.
Excuse me, not Chris, it's the advisory meeting.
28th.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, just to put a bow on it, so despite some of the limitations we have with open house, we're getting a pretty robust response. the limitation, some of the limitations we have with open house, we're getting a pretty robust response. People registering in advance. They register for a time slot. We'll have people outside all of the shops, uh, to just gauge capacity, but we're, and what we're doing is we're extending the open house by, by an hour to allow, while pre-COVID, we would, we would all be very impressed with a surge of people and the crowds. That really meant, this is, that's not the, that's not what we're shooting for this time, but we want to make sure there's enough access. So the team has done a great job of, of, of bringing that, uh, bringing that to life. And also to, to a point that Sandy made, the one thing that we've all become used to with, uh, whether it's Google Meet or Zoom, is now we're opening up this whole frontier of being able to access, give kids access to credentialed people in the evenings. We know teenagers are on a different wake-sleep cycle. And we know that from two forty-five to three forty-five might not be the ideal time for them to be sitting with their math teacher in the classroom. We're not getting rid of that. That's still, this is an and, not an or. So sometimes our, sometimes our students are firing on all cylinders at eight o'clock at night while we're barely staying awake. Uh, this offers another opportunity, especially if later in the evening, many families might have a parent at home where they can support the fact, like, don't you have to get on for your tutoring session at seven thirty? And with that, I think we'll be able to address some of those other academic needs. So great, great work all around, uh, putting these programs together.
Very good. Old business. A doctor public policy comment policy. We talked about it last month. This is the second reading. We need to vote on that motion. But before we do that, I misspoke earlier. I said thirty minutes. It's fifteen minutes during the beginning of the meeting. Just, sorry.
I thought it was three. You said last time we did that.
Yeah, but yes, and I misspoke. So I need a motion to accept the, um, public comment policy.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, Noel, sit with second. Any discussion on the policy? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous motion carries. New business, out-of-state field trips. We have two. We have the automotive and the cosmetology field trips. One cosmetology is going to New Hampshire and automotive is going to Warwick Road Island for the New England Institute of Technology.
I'll make the motion. I'm both in.
Okay.
Okay.
Second by Situit. Motion by Noel. Any discussion on the field trips? Say no. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to follow this? Unanimous motion carries. Draft admission policy, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, members of the committee, this is, this will be the first reading of, uh, proposed adjustments to our admissions policy. I'll arrange to have the, uh, policy placed on our, on the website. Uh, there's a, it's a lengthy policy, and there's also a crosswalk to the existing policy we have. Uh, the motivation behind this policy adjustment comes from recent changes to Chapter Seventy-four regulations from the Board of Education. Uh, one of the most noticeable changes going forward is uh, that the state will have, uh, school districts who have admissions policies, vocational schools, AGEs, et cetera, that this will be an annual process, that we would review admissions data, we would, we would essentially bring this back to committees on, on an annual basis. There aren't a lot of substantive changes. We will still maintain criteria for admissions in the same areas with attendance, and grades, uh, discipline record, recommendation, and an interview. One of the main thrusts of the readjustment, quite honestly, is to make the policy read to help answer parent questions. Sometimes policies can be written in such a dense way that you don't actually glean enough easy information out of it. But this revised policy goes into much greater depth. It would be very helpful for our admissions office and prospective families. So while there are no, I don't, I don't think there are many radical changes to it overall. Uh, the state provided all schools a template to use. We didn't have to use it. We consulted with the template. We've had our, uh, local council review it. But I would ask, uh, that when we come back together for our meeting in November, I can speak to it in a more detailed manner as needed, and then it'll be back on the agenda next month.
Okay, thank you.
Warren.
My very colorful sheet this month.
Oh, very good.
Warren, six, six A, seven, and seven A totaling one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second by, uh, Harrington. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. No one opposed. It's unanimous. Motion carries. From the board, any requests for action?
Not requests for action, but, um, behalf of the town of Rockland, I want to thank the Social Tech Reverberates, uh, their volunteers to donate the signatures and signs and posters for their annual holiday stroll, which is the day after Thanksgiving. Along with that, I told them that we would like to possibly, if we deemed to have so with the admission policies and admission team, go up there and have a night where people can get, find out more information about the school, where we haven't been allowed in to Rockland schools in the past. But I think that's gonna change. Um, so it, last year, I think, a couple of years ago, was the culinary, this cookies, things that passed out, things like that there. So we, now that we have horticulture, maybe they could bring up some plans to open up a nice big thing there and get a prime location for that, for the work. Yeah, but, uh, on behalf of the town of Rockland, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You have to sing and dance, nobody around my table.
That's why I always want that one, but.
Try, I have a, can I, can I? I have an idea that I think, I don't know if it's, if it's actually feasible or not legally, any kind of constraints, but it's a, a money-making opportunity that I think the school could have, as well as giving the kids, um, in on experience. So especially with the real estate market the way it is right now. My wife, I just saw a home in my neighborhood get flipped and sold for way more than what it just went for. And I was thinking, if, if the school could venture into something like that, buying a property that needs work, you have all the shops here. You have construction, you have electrical, you have plumbing and HVAC, you have landscaping. And the school could buy the property, give the kids in on experience, sell it at a profit, and put that profit back into the school. So I, I just thought this might be a good, something to think about. This is the.
Now, to be honest, I haven't thought of that. I don't know if it's possible, but it's.
It's not, it's, you have to go into a lottery process with that. I looked into that a few years ago when I first got on the committee, but, uh, because there was some land close to us that was coming available, but it wasn't, uh, for the lot size.
Okay, what I can say, Mr. Chairman, at, at the very least, is that the work that our, for instance, earlier in my report on, on potential new construction.
Yeah.
That, although it, although it doesn't, it's not the, the revenue stream that you're describing, we certainly.
Cost savings.
It's found money.
Absolutely, absolutely.
For every dollar we save on their construction, it's, we can stretch those debt authorization dollars further. But it's, there's a lot of power in that.
I thought it may be an opportunity to get income for things that the school can't do like that, like maybe equipment or technology or, um, what about acting as a contractor? Because that's one of the biggest problems in, you know, as a, as a person who tries to have work done in my home, trying to coordinate a plumber with the electrician, you know, to get all of this done. If, if it's all right here in-house, it's boom, 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 boom.
We need our recent graduates to jump on that.
Ah.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Um, seconded by Situit. All in favor?
Aye.